I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this July 18, 2023 county council meeting to order. All of my council colleagues are present, as well as Christina, the auditor. First, on the agenda, department updates for the Sheriff's Department. We welcome Larry Jolly.
Thank you for having me. Good seeing all of you. I think that's the first time I've been to this. The sheriff interviews you guys.
Well, nice to see you.
I'll be quick because I know you guys have had a long day.
Thank you.
The sheriff emailed the monthly reports to all of you, which was the flesh report, the biannual commissary report. When he printed this for me, we've had four fatalities this year, now up to five last Friday. We are over our total 2022, and I don't know how many we had in 2022. I didn't research that before I came today. Speed, drugs, alcohol are all factors with unrestricted motorists contributing as well. Had a couple more vendor forms that need to be completed for the federal inmates. Joey got with Kathy Adamson last week. Those have been completed and submitted. Budget was submitted on July 3rd. An outline was submitted by the sheriff detailing all the accounts. He said if you have any questions, reach out to him before you go to the next meeting.
Thank you.
The chemical addiction program is in week two. Everything is going good. They're waiting on coordinates from the auditor so that we can get donations from the public. We are holding 10 inmates for Walbash, two for the Indiana Department of Corrections, and two for other counties. When I left at two, our population was 65. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments, board members? I'm Larry. Thank you much.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you too. Don't trip.
If it had gotten you last night.
Kathy, anything or just observing?
Observing.
Rick, anything or observing?
Just observing.
John Geyer, Highway.
I skipped over John.
I skipped... no, I didn't. So we'll get him on the next pass.
I think he feels left out. Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been a hole lot. Bring you up to date, the guy's been patching holes, changing over. I think I've told you, we got the brush cutter. They're operating it. Of course, they're mowing road sides. We've been laying pub. Covering up the milling roads. They are going to start chip sealing tomorrow. Got a little oil order, so they're going to be doing that. I'm going to give you an update on Bridge 50 out here with the Tippecanoe River. AT&amp;T, we've been waiting on them to get the fiber optic line moved. They got it done. La Porte Construction, they're going to start on it. I don't have a start date, but they'll start construction on it anytime soon. So that'll be getting closed and that work will be getting started in the near future here. We had the power broom ordered. It got delivered about four o'clock this afternoon. So we got it. They just got an auto trailer to build it away. That just got delivered. Appropriations, I think tonight you'll see the two for bridges 32 and 50 that were in MVH. We didn't want to switch their mover to new bridge. You'll see them come through, moving them back and forth. Cancel those funds out of MVH and put them over into bridge. We've talked about that before. And then you'll see appropriation coming out of 1176 into Bytunus for $700,000. And that is for your community crossings and chip and seal. So $666,000 of that is for your community crossing matches. So you've got two years of matches. That's why you have so much. Each year's $333,000. So one of those purchases for last year's awards, that's really $133,000. And then one of them is this year's award, and that's wheel tax, surtax, money that we match with. So that's why that amounts so much. We'll see that coming through, and then we're taking a little bit of that for chip and seal. Is there any questions?
Yes, sir.
About that Bridge 50, is it 160, 180, 120, 180? Once they get started?
I think it's 180, I think.
No other depending.
Yeah, they're supposed to be done by November.
They're just closing one lane of tire, they're closing?
Closing whole bridge. That way they can get it better. The good thing is, New 31 is only in my old ways.
Yeah, yeah, it's about to work.
So if you don't have any questions on that, I have one more thing I want to bring up. And that was, I was going to, so on Old 31 South, I'm not going to bring this up for you guys to vote on tonight, but Old 31 South, federal aid project, that one's going to let next year. And we overbudgeted on that. And we've got to calculate it. We're going to be $300,000 over on that. And I need more money for chip and seal this year. I was going to ask you if we could take $300,000 of that out and bring it over into Bytunus for chip seal.
Because you'll have enough left in the old?
In that we've set aside.
You'll have enough?
We'll have enough set aside for that project. We've overbudgeted. We've saved more than what we need.
Okay, so this is just information sharing and asking our dogs. And maybe not blessing, because is it worth bringing in appropriation to us?
It won't be appropriation. It'll be a transfer request next month.
Transfer request next month. Gotcha. Thank you back clearly.
Is this from our contribution?
This is from money that I have set aside, budgeted each year for the last five years, and put aside into that. And then I'm asking to transfer that back. I've used MVH funds, saved it back, and I'm going to ask to put that, transfer it over into Bytunus.
But that won't affect the federal aid itself?
Just move it from one pop to the other, so we can use it instead of that next step there and look for it.
And you're going to use it for what?
Chip seal.
And so then if we say, sure, that's a good idea, then there'll be a transfer next month? And then that money will be available, so you'll have plenty of summer, plenty of time to utilize it? And do with it what you want?
Yes.
Is that a correct statement? Okay, okay.
If nobody's seen a problem with it, I'll go ahead and hand this transfer request over to Christina tonight. She can advertise it.
For next month.
For next month.
Comments, questions? I have no issue. I think that's a champion idea. Board members, any?
No, you don't vote on it tonight.
No, we're not. He's just bringing, he's just information sharing. I think that's a champion idea. Okay.
Just go ahead and have to work.
Let me get the paperwork for next month. Paperwork for next month.
Actually, it's just a transfer. Doesn't have to be advertised. You could, if you wanted.
A transfer doesn't have to be advertised?
Oh, okay. I thought it did.
Do you want us to?
So can you approve it then?
You can vote on it tonight if you want.
Oh, I didn't know that.
What would be the other transfers?
I have to do that. You don't have to do it before the commissioner, so it won't, next month?
It will, yes.
Okay.
They can go ahead and vote on it then. Then you can get it quicker.
Yeah? I didn't realize that.
Me too. I thought everything had, only appropriations, I guess, have to be advertised. Okay. Now we know.
Good luck with that. From your president next year.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Board members, any other questions, comments? Or John? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Jerry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you.
Good to see everybody.
Nice seeing you.
Thank you. Nice to be here. Nice to be seen, like some people say. Okay, I want to give you a little bit of a report on our Coroner's Office and activities and things like that. Effective today, we've had 110 residents of Fulton, well, there aren't residents maybe, but people have passed away in Fulton County so far this year. Of that, 37 of those families, our Coroner's Office has served, which equates into 34%. So we're right there where we've been the last several years, between 31 and 34%. So we've had actually 23 males and 14 females. This time last year, we actually had served 39 families. Of those types of death and types or qualifications, we have one that was undetermined, 30 that are natural, and six are accidental or accident. We've had five autopsies so far this year. One was actually carried over from 2022 because it happened at the very end of the year, like New Year's Eve. So anyway, we have 10 labs that we had performed out at Woodlawn. And then we've also had toxicology, which that's sent down to access toxicology. We've actually done eight tox draws, and then that always accompanies an autopsy. So we had a total of 13 for the year. Grants season is wide open. It's starting up, and it's exciting. The Indiana State Department of Health has just unveiled their possibilities for us to write grants. And I'm hoping that those will be submitted yet this week. If not, it'll be the first of next week to get those completed. We also have a hemp grant, which is related to the funds assisting with our 2023 tabletop exercise. And what that is, it's through the local emergency planning committee. It's a collaborative group of professionals from all over the county. Many Tier Two people, first responders. Some of you are on that committee too, because we have to have a diverse selection for that. And that also, by doing these tabletops and preparations and things, it helps us to attain other grants, bringing more money back into the county. So that's why that's important. But this hemp grant is something unique and different that I've never tried before. We're actually, it's a collaborative effort with maybe three of us or four that'll be working on that. And hopefully, we're going to get together with somebody from the state. I've kind of been, if you will, trying to get the attention of one of the men from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. And so he said that he would send somebody up. But the last time we saw him, which was last week at the EMS meeting, he said, well, could we go down there? So I guess we may pile into a car and go down and visit the person who will help us to get into the portals and navigate those waters that we're not so certain of. Just to let you know, like what the tabletop exercise is. Back in 2022, we partnered with Sunoco Products of Akron. And kind of just a brief scenario, one of their big tanker trucks rolled over onto 19, and a bunch of their hot glue, you know, ran down the road. It was heading toward, you know, some of the creek and some things like that. So we have a scenario. It gives us all a chance to practice in the event that something like that would occur. So we try to select places from all over the county to make it of interest to everybody. So this next year, we are partnering with Siri Solutions. I can't really tell you what it's going to be because it's kind of a secret. But it'll take place out in Lighters Ford, Abinabi Township. So the Abinabi Fire Department and Siri Solution are our hosts for that event. So that's a little bit about that. And when we have those local emergency planning committee meetings, attendance is very important. Our collaboration and participation by everybody, because that does help with the positivity of our grant outcomes. So it's very important. Coming up on August 9th, we've got lunch and learn with the Tier Two partners. What the Tier Two partners are, are different companies and entities that have hazardous materials that we might be subjected to or in contact with. So we're going to get to know them better. We hope that they will get to know us better. There on August 9th, that's going to be held at the Fairgrounds. And the Farm Bureau is going to be one of our sponsors to help us a little bit with lunch and learning. So I wanted to let you know that. Another thing relative to the Coroner's Office, our forensic van is now up to 100% again. We don't have to worry about it being dead when we arrive to go, you know, on a call. Everything was fine though, because I took my own vehicle. One time we had to do that. Another time, our vehicle was getting serviced up in Middlebury to get our retrofitting done, so this doesn't happen. And again, I just went ahead and took my own little van, and everything worked out perfect. So it's back. It's smiling. It's shiny, and it's ready for the Fulton Bulldog Parade. That's our next place. We're going to look forward to that. So anyway, wanted also let you know about this. This is also with the Indiana Farm Bureau. You know, back in February, I talked to all of you about, you know, our hearts, the cardiovascular system and things like that. And I feel like that's one of my jobs, to keep everybody healthy if I can, to like drop hints, so you can be aware of things. So I got this in the mail yesterday, Lifeline screening. And I know some of you might be interested in this. I will tell you, it has multiple different types of testing, like carotid arteries. They do that with the ultrasound. That's your arteries right here in the neck. To check to see, make sure they're not clogged up. They also can do heart rhythm screening, so that's for atrial fibrillation. That's something that's kind of, we've got that in our family, and I'm lucky I don't have that yet. But I want to keep on top of it. The aortic aneurysm screening, and that's of the abdomen. That's that great big artery that shoots off the top of the heart, comes all the way down, supplies the blood to the legs. Sometimes those can develop soft spots or have a bulge in it. They've got a method that they can detect that. And I will tell you, two of our cases about a month ago were aortic aneurysms where they actually blew. So one was a man and one was a lady. And it was very unexpected. I mean, you don't really have any symptoms with that. The lady thought she was having a heart attack, but there's no test like a hospital that can detect that. I mean, as far as like the troponin, which is the cardiac enzyme. So if you can be proactive like this, they're also doing osteoporosis screening. So that's important, the bone density. So I wanted to let you know that. That's coming up on August 10th at Whipper Will Church. If anybody would like the number, you can call up. And this is something you don't need an appointment with a doctor. The alternatives would be, if you wanted to go to your doctor and ask for these, then they would be paid for by your insurance. But like for these five screenings, and then, well, it'd be six screenings, no, five. That concludes the osteoporosis. It's like $145, which is not bad when you configure all the data and information you're going to get. They will tell you that day if your, you know, if your levels are too high or a question, they'll let you know immediately. Otherwise, your results come back in about 10 days. Then there's a portal you can get. The other thing is that I will tell you, they do not test for coronary arteries. Those are the arteries that supply the heart with oxygen, food, everything that your heart needs to keep beating. So they do not do that. So that would be something you could either have done with your doctor's assistance or if you wanted to just do it yourself. Like the only place I'm aware of that does that's St. Vincent's. And there is a St. Vincent Hospital in Kokomo that's conveniently located. And that test is about $49. So, but you can't use your insurance on that, but it's very cost effective. So just want to keep you guys safe. So I'm going to let you know about that. And my last thing is that I just wanted to let you know, our Coroner's Office has grown exponentially. We've gone up about 300% within a 10-year time period for our families that we've served. Like back in 2010, if you want to compare that to 2020, we had 24 families we served in 2010, but we had 78 in 2020. So that's a lot. That's about 340%. 2011 again, so I think it's not just a short-term trend. I feel like it's trending, and that's kind of the way. We're on our way this year again. We've had 37 families we've served. And if you look back at 2013, we only had 26 the whole year. So we're here to help in any way we can to keep people safe, and we love our community. So anyway, that's, I think, all I have for the moment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Jerry, board members? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, yes.
We appreciate your information.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so you want me to ask John Flynn if he's got anything to say?
Yes.
Anything you want to say? Okay. Michael Lad, Fecco, anything you want to say?
I have to, yeah.
Well, trust me, he's got a lot to talk about.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll start with the housing study first. Sometime in August, we're going to have a housing symposium. And that's going to be community-wide. We'll be bringing everybody in. It's where we're going to talk about what the study has produced so far, get some opinions. I tried to send everybody a link. I don't know if you guys got it or not. If you didn't, let me know. I'll get it back to you. There's about 150 pages worth of information, just general stuff for you to look at. So just keep it on the paper. Or of course, in the next meeting, when we finally do set the dates, I'll let you all know what the dates are, everything like that. Second thing I did was, I held, conducted an economic development seminar a couple weeks ago on the 7th with a gentleman named Lee Llewellyn, who's head of IEDA, which is the state's, my association's, economic development organization at state level. And he came in, talked about trends in economic development. I can only invite, because of open door laws, I can only invite certain numbers of people and things. But if you're interested in it, go to Channel 4, type in Fecco, and it'll pop up. I will recommend a pair of earphones because the sound isn't all the way there all the time. But you can get through to it. And the last thing, well, Randy attended his first meeting, and it was really a good meeting. I'm glad he was there, had some things to contribute, whatnot. I don't know if Randy will say something later, but I'm going to go ahead and move on to a request I have. A couple months ago, I told you that Black Tour was getting ready to be completed and should be done by the end of the year. And then it came up in the new contract, as well as in the old one. We're obligated, Fecco is obligated, to give NIPSCO a contribution in aid construction for the installations that are going to go out there, which means the gas, to the tune of $66,650, I'm sorry, $66,685.85. So what I'm going to ask for, because we don't have that money, is to split it between the county and the city. So I'm asking you for $33,342.93. This is a contract that's got a 90-day run on it, which means we have until September 27th of this year to make some decisions. I'm just not asking you tonight to do that, to make a decision or anything. But the quicker that we can get this done, the quicker we can get this thing started and running up and running.
Well, what all is exactly this for? What all do you say this is for?
It's actually just, it's a good fit down payment that we're going to finish this thing.
I mean, what all are you kind of finishing? Gas lines, everything?
Everything. It's going to be done. Asphalt, the whole, everything. REMC is holding, I think it's a $283,000 grant for everything else. And once it's done, Steve, you'll be able to sell it, be able to do the whole thing.
Not done yet or what all?
Right, yeah. No, it's a good honest question because you don't know what's what, you know. But yeah, this thing will be to get it completely finished. So that's information I'll ask for any questions you guys might have on that one, or anything else.
So you're going to ask the city to contribute half?
I'm sorry. I'm going to the city next.
But you haven't appeared before the city yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
It's only, it's because of a timing issue.
Right, right, right. Any questions, board members, regarding this request of half the funding?
That's for the gas line from NIPSCO to run it down the surface.
All the way around. You guys can pass that down, keep it if you want. That's, that's everything. And then the grant with REMC will do the asphalting. You know where the road kind of stops being good and gets into gravel and everything? They're going to start right there, go all the way around, do the parking lots areas in front of the buildings, the whole thing. There's been a request to put native grasses in out there, fix it up, and make it look really, really nice. And so we're working with people to get that going too. So once it gets done, it should look pretty good. Then you get your money back, that's the most important part. You get your money back through the tap and fees. And the way that that would work was this tap and fee gets, somebody comes in, tap and fee gets paid. I'll split it between you and the city, and then move on from there.
Do you know what that fee is going to be?
I have no idea yet. I've got a feeling this is going to be kind of a roll. Doctor, I would too.
What would that be? Is that funds?
Yes. There's the balance. I've already looked it up. Other questions, comments regarding this request? Or half the cost of the NIPSCO gas line, which is $33,340?
$42.93.
$42.90, yeah.
And if you want to sell, the total is $66,685.85.
What would happen if we agreed to pay our half and the city doesn't, or vice versa? Where's the other half of the money going?
Be honest with you, I don't know, but I'll be completely honest, this is a little bit too. It probably kills the whole thing.
Yeah.
And then you've just got all your investments sitting out there doing nothing.
And you've got two buildings without gas.
Without gas, although Dan Paul's going to put into propane tanks.
So if he does that, will he still tie in the NIPSCO that's available?
I don't think so.
So we'll get now?
I don't know that. I'm saying that right now.
Right.
It depends on how fast things get moving.
Right. It depends on the cost too. No, it says two years later, when propane's doubled, we will change mine.
No, you're right.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's just going to be, in Dan's case, it's going to be a toss-up.
Natural gas is expensive to start, but once you get it, it's not. It's very economical. Well, nothing's cheap, but it's one of the cheapest forms of heat you can have.
I think Dan has moved on out of frustration.
Yeah, true.
You know, he's been in the office. We've had him over the last few years. I think if we got this thing going, maybe we'll go in the other direction.
He can't even really move in there yet, right?
Not really.
He doesn't have electricity yet, does he?
Yeah. They're putting, last time I was out, they were putting electric field. Last time I was out, they were putting electricity out, but they, no hookups. And he's got very interesting conversations that he had with people. So he can change slides.
So, so board members, do, do we want to ask more questions? Do we want to table this request until our August council meeting? Do we want to discuss approving and moving forward on this tonight? If we decide to do this, I think the funding should come from our Edit Economic Development Fund. And we have more than enough money in that fund to cover $34,000, $33,000 through $44,000. Talk to me.
We can do it face-to-face, get the ball rolling and maybe the city will follow along.
I kind of do too.
Kind of short-sighted on our part not to finish the project.
It's a situation where you don't have a lot of choice. There's already lots of money invested and if it's not finished, it's.
True.
And $34,000 in the scope of everything is nothing.
So $34,000.
I'm not diminishing that, but.
I know what your plan is. I mean, you hate to let $34,000 kill a pretty substantial.
Deal. That's true.
Hopefully in a few years, it's full.
Just need your motion.
Okay. It does need a motion. So Ron's there making a motion that, and that we do give the $33,344.
$42.
$42. Thank you. Well, it's $42. We round if we don't do pennies. That's okay. Lori seconded. And this is going to come out of Edit, our Edit Fund. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Was there anything else?
No.
You got money and now you're sitting down?
Yep.
Okay, I see how that goes. Okay. So we've covered, all right. Next on our agenda are the minutes from our June 20th County Council meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting?
Yes.
And if so, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So move.
Randy move to approve. Is there a second? Steve seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. I am passing the minutes. If you will sign and keep passing down to Pete. Please, thank you. Next, transfers. And we now have two. We don't sign this, we just approve. The first one is from the Soil and Water Conservation District, transferring $3,180 from building rent to office supply. And the explanation is, will not be utilizing the building rent account this year and need to reimburse soil and water for office supplies. Any questions? Zero motion? Pete move to approve? Is there a second? Randy seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. And the second transfer request is the one that John Guyer for the Highway Department spoke to us about in his presentation. This is taking $300,000 from old U.S. repa-, uh, re-
Repaving project.
Repaving project, thank you. And putting it by Tuminus. Transfer of over budgeted funds from federal aid grant match account to By Tuminus to put toward chip and seal projects.
Motion to approve.
Steve move to approve. Ron seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. That is the transfer request. Next, additional appropriations. Hang on, guys. the Highway Department. From 1135 Coombridge appropriating to 1135 Coombridge. That was budgeted in MVH. More cash was reserved from 2022's budget, allowing 1135 Coombridge to pay for 2023 bridge projects. This is a total amount of Bridge 32, $258,001. Bridge 50, $269,771 for a total of $527,722. Any discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve?
72, not 22.
Did I say 22? My apologies.
72.
72. My apologies. Pete move to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Lori seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. I am signing and passing for your signature. And the next one is, the next one is, where is it? Is this?
It's for all of those. I'd actually do one per fund.
One per fund. So this is for all of the 1176 MVH. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, guys. Okay. So reducing from 1176 MVH budget in order to appropriate the balance from 1135, $527,772 and $700,000 for By Tuminus. Placement of monies into account for chip and seal program and to cover the community crossing matching funds that John spoke to us about. Any discussion? Zero motion to approve? Steve move to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Lori seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Okay. The next one is Communications for the Jail Construction Fund. Contract Services, $3,474.90. And Contract Services, excuse me, $10,976.90 for a total of $14,451.80. Scheffler Construction, final waivers for contract with pyramid and finishing electrical work at the power site. And this was for Communications and Pete will abstain. Is there a motion to approve? Ron move to approve? Steve seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Pete abstaining. I'm signing and passing. And the last appropriation request is Commissioners from the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, $500,000 for the Apache Drive Project. Along, for the Apache Drive Project. Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I mean, this, the park got cowed to.
Say it again.
No, this never.
Apache's different. Sidewalk is down 14 is what got cowed to.
That's still a reacquisition. Problem.
Yep, yep, yep.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve? Pete move to approve? Is there a second? Randy seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Now we're to old business. Pete, old business?
Yeah, one thing. At our last council meeting, there was an appropriation for the Health Department. And the, what it was was vague and I didn't understand it. So I voted no and wanted to go on record as saying that I'm not against immunization clinics. And had I understood what it was, I would have approved it. My vote didn't change the outcome, but I just, I made an error in not understanding. So I didn't vote for something that I was confused about. And as it turned out, it was pretty simple and I would have voted yes had I understood.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you. Randy, old business?
No.
So, so your first FEDCO meeting was an enjoyable experience and informative experience and eye-opening experience. And you're going to enjoy being a valuable participant to the FEDCO Board.
I would elaborate just a little bit on that briefly. Went to the first meeting the other day, was very impressed with the members. They greeted me and made me feel very welcome. And we've got some good things on the plate coming down the road. Already learned quite a bit that I didn't know. And I've probably been one of the biggest critics in the past, but mainly because I didn't know what they were doing. So looking forward to working with them and improving Polk Town.
Thank you. Thank you. Chase, old business?
No, ma'am.
Lori, old business?
No, ma'am.
Steve? Ron? I have none. Christina? Old business, anyone? New business?
No.
Randy, new business?
No.
Chase?
No, ma'am.
Lori, new business? Steve?
No.
Ron?
Yes. Couple of weeks ago, Phil and I went to State Col conference down in Carmel. And we went down specifically for, one of the breakout sessions was ambulance and EMS, how to pay for it. And I don't think it was that, we found out we're not the only county that has that issue. And we're talking large counties from Allen County and the city of Fort Wayne was there. And also Steuben County was another one, our size. Some of the information was, was good. Some of it, I don't think, more of a complaint session than it was anything else. But while we were there, we did corner Jason Simler, who is in the process with Baker Tilly, doing our five-year plan. And we sat through Wes Bennett, DLGF-headed at the time, on the upcoming reassessments and the different changes in the taxing that the state come out with. And we cornered Jason about, did he put that in our five-year plan? Because if he was going on a five-year plan before the legislature and then he comes in with the differences that are coming down the pike, that would really change the ballgame. And fortunately, he said yes, he had the numbers involved. So he said he's real close to having it finished, but he did use the new assessments and property tax guidelines that the state come up with this year. So that was informative. That's it.
So, so we shall see.
We shall.
When he presents the updated five-year plan, how that's reflected.
Yes.
Oh, boy. Yes. Thank you. I have no new business. New business, Christina? New business, anyone? If there's nothing else, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion? Chase move to adjourn? Is there a second? Randy seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.